Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started with this special meeting of the Placerville City Council for Tuesday, October 6th. Will everybody please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance. For which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you, everybody. So you thought you were getting away without a council meeting this week, but not so much. All right, well, let's go ahead and get started with roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Acuna.
Here.
Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to item three, which are announcements or presentations to the public. Mr. Morris, do we have anything?
I don't really have anything. I know there's one thing that I know that we may mention, we do have our National Night Out tonight, if anybody wants to know about that. It's kind of a different National Night Out, but our police department will be downtown in the bell tower with masks on and distribute the information, talking to the public. And many of our restaurants have special menus that they, I think, are special for you to order tonight. And we encourage people to frequent our restaurants tonight. So, and then, I don't know, Mayor Acuna, you had one other item I know you wanted on next week's meeting. Do you want to mention that tonight? Or you're good?
No, wait for, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Addie, you had something?
Yes, Michael, I got a while back, a memo from the police department asking us if we wanted to participate in the National Night Out. And I never got any kind of response. I said, I, you know, I would if I could and where I could. But if we're, I don't know what was expected of us. Is it going around to the restaurants and talking to folks or being at the bell tower? I wasn't quite sure.
Patty, I think primarily just being at the bell tower, if you would like to, and not all night, but there may be other opportunities just to visit with people as you're down there. So I think that's the main plan for tonight.
Okay, so there are a couple of functions going on with the league tonight, and I did sign up to attend one, so I'm not sure it can be downtown. But if, you know, as long as people are going to be down there, I don't think it's necessary. With a mask on, they won't know who we are.
Should be fine.
Yeah, I'm going to be, well, depending on what time we wrap up here, the goal is to get to the bell tower around 5:00 PM. But we'll see how this goes after this.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other announcements from council members? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the adoption of the agenda.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that measure passes. Agenda is adopted. We will go ahead and move on to item five, which is our discussion item, and item 5.1, adopt a resolution approving a contract change order with Doug Veerkamp Engineering for the Spring Street pavement repair from Coloma Road to Bedford Avenue in the amount not to exceed $135,000 for a failed waterline replacement. And two, approve a contract change order with Doug Veerkamp Engineering for the Spring Street pavement repair from Coloma Road to Bedford in an amount not to exceed $70,000. And three, approve a budget appropriation from the Measure L Reserve Fund in the amount of $205,000. And four, authorizing the city manager to execute contract change orders. And I believe Ms. Neves has this for us this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First off, I really wanted to express my gratitude for allowing us to schedule this meeting so quickly and that you were able to attend. And, you know, it's been an interesting week. I'm referring, this is my second Monday this week. So I just really wanted to say thank you for that. So, really quick, why are we here? And how did we get here? As you know, in August, on the 25th, council approved the construction contract with Doug Veerkamp General Engineering. And as we moved towards scheduling the work, along the way, there were some items that started to kind of, no pun intended, surface related to our water system, and then ultimately some storm drain systems. So when we began to get the work on the calendar, we got a call around September 9th regarding a water service down towards the intersection of Coloma and Spring Street that had begun to become problematic. Public Works, you know, we worked with them closely during the design process, and I'll cover a little bit of the design process on how we got through it prior to doing a construction contract here shortly. But when we, when we got out there, when Public Works got out there in the beginning of September prior to Veerkamp starting their work, it was determined that, yes, there was an issue with the service. And furthermore, that there was an issue with the corporation stop that's located at the main. You know, a service has two stops. It has one at the curb, which is where the main service box to the house is located, and the one at the main, that's referred to as the corporation stop. So you have control over a service in two locations. The corporation stop at the main didn't work. And so that necessitated an unplanned shutdown and some work in that area prior to Veerkamp starting their work. And when they did the shutdown and they were doing the valve exercising for service replacements on Spring Street, they turned the valve that's located at the intersection of Coloma and Spring Street and found that it did not shut the system off entirely. In fact, it actually started to fail. And by fail, I mean, it started to leak pretty heavily. So all of that happened about the third week of September after we'd awarded the construction contract. And then, the week before we actually started work, I think it was on the 24th of September, I met out there with Veerkamp and Public Works, and we walked the site. And it was at that time, Public Works said, you know, hey, is there any way we could include this valve since we're out here? And I said, yeah, you know, we have a very competent and, you know, reliable contractor. And so, you know, yeah, I mean, anytime that we have an opportunity to do an unforeseen but necessary repair, we take that opportunity as well. So we decided, okay, well, we'll include the valve replacement. As work progressed, the following week, we actually started on the contract work for service replacement and found similarly to the previous issue that the corporation stops weren't working, which, you know, these started to become, within about two weeks timeframe, started to become red flags on the water main. So when we proceeded, we actually got to a point where we started excavating to do the subgrade work. And Veerkamp pulled up a concrete slab. So the cross section for Spring Street had about two inches of failing asphalt located on about a four inch concrete slab, and then directly below that slab with minimal and not really even a lot of cover, we had some of our utilities. The two utilities I'm referring to are water and storm drain. When that concrete slab was lifted up, then the pressure was relieved off of the surrounding area of the pipes. And then we started to see material and joint failures. I forwarded a photograph to, to City Manager Morris regarding some of the material issues that we started to see, where one part of the line actually cracked. We do have existing steel pipe out there. Steel pipe can, it's not uncommon around here, as far as water main material. We actually had a segment of steel pipe that went through a cistern on Main Street that was dating back to like 1931. So they do have a pretty hefty service life. But when it comes down to the compounding issue of not having sufficient coverage and you're during work in the area, it can, you know, lead to other issues. And it did. The other was when we, as we were doing the work, working on the subgrade, the storm drain has virtually no cover. And as they were progressing, working on the storm drain, the storm drain pipe, which originally was thought to be reinforced concrete pipe, is actually vitrified clay pipe. Vitrified clay pipe is an unreinforced material that they don't typically use for storm drain anymore, nor do they use it for sewer anymore, because it doesn't have as long of a service life as they once thought it could. So the vitrified clay pipe, actually, it's exactly what it sounds like. It's like, like a dish. It's as fragile as a dish. And it broke and capsized inside of itself. So going back a little bit to how we got here as far as evaluating the utilities during the design process, this project was designed closely with, you know, Public Works and Engineering working together to assess the utilities. We actually, in an effort to save some design budget, because the design budget at the time was extremely tight, Public Works offered, and we gratefully accepted CCTVing the line. And, you know, engineering staff and public works staff was out in the field together. And furthermore, we reviewed the lines and the videos together. And at the time, we looked at the storm drain system. And other than a few joint displacements, there was no indication of the storm drain having any preexisting issues. Now, from inside the pipe that's been coated with years of material, it does become difficult to tell what material it was. And at the time, because of how shallow it was, we had to kind of make an assumption that it was reinforced clay, or excuse me, reinforced concrete pipe, as opposed to the brittle clay pipe I just described. So, so that was an unknown and unforeseen condition. And then, as far as the water main work goes, we, the way that we scoped the water main work was, we do several things. We look at call log history. We look at issues related to valve operations. And we look at service calls and service issues. Are there issues leaking at curb stops or corp stops? And so we did go through Spring Street end to end. And it was determined at that time that based on the kind of curb stop we had there, we did have 13 services that potentially had lead components, the goosenecks that I've mentioned before, that needed to be replaced. So that work was included in the original contract. However, we had no logs or any information regarding issues regarding the main itself. So when that concrete slab was lifted up, it essentially unmasked what had been hiding underneath it. And that was that the system didn't have sufficient cover and that it was aged and taxed. And when corp stops at the main start failing, it's usually an indication of material issues as well. We actually had a similar issue on, when we did the party project, too. And that was one of the things that led to that project going out to construction. But as far as that goes, we didn't have any supporting data to necessitate replacing the main at the time that we were in design. And then all these issues actually started to surface after we'd already awarded the construction contract. So that's kind of the how and the why we got here. And then the what's next, right? So one of the things that, when we took a look at this year's CIP projects, you know, we looked at, you know, I talked about this before in the budget meeting, we talked about the extensive backlog of projects that Engineering is trying to get through and Public Works is trying to get through. And we're making some really good headway. We went from delivering about three to four projects a year to, in the last five years, we're averaging almost a project a month. So, you know, it's a huge increase of project delivery. And I can wholeheartedly say that it comes with the gratitude to the voters of Measure H and L. And it comes to the gratitude of the political will behind both City Council and Measure H and L Committee, because they do, you guys do help us push these along, and we appreciate it. So as far as the funding goes, however, this year, in order to address the backlog of projects, in speaking with, with Assistant City Manager Dave Warren and Finance Director, it was kind of this pattern that had been occurring as we've been trying to deliver these projects. We were finding ourselves in, you know, it was almost a little bit like a little bit of a race. You know, one project would get ahead a little further than we'd anticipated. And so we'd be out to construction or be ready to go out to construction, whereas this project, sitting back here, but it's holding hostage some construction funding. So then we were having to pull funding from other projects to backfill the project that's shovel ready. So when we proceeded with this year's CIP development, one thing, or two things that we did was, number one, we restored the $200,000 operating reserve as part of Measure L. And that number was come, came about by estimating about 10% the annual revenue of Measure L. The other thing we did was, in order to avoid carving out construction funding out of existing projects, we created what's considered, what's called a construction reserve. And this was essentially about $400,000, $460,000, $470,000 held should something come up to a pre-existing approved project. And this, these funding sources could only be used on prior approved projects. And what a prior approved project is, a project recommended by Measure H and L and adopted by City Council, which this project qualifies for both. So it's, you know, given the amount of money, it does exceed our, our current, you know, requirement within the resolution and City Manager Morris's signatory authority. But given the impacts that we've already kind of been experiencing to residences on Spring Street, it's imperative that we get this line back to a reliable condition, or in fact, put in a new water main to make it a reliable condition for the customers it serves. And also to put something back that is maintainable for Public Works to have better control and functionality of the system as well. I think that covers the bulk of it. We have been, and I apologize for, you know, it's been a busy couple of 48 hours. So we did get the quotes updated to us and sent to us last night. And then we got the storm drain quote today at noon. So this is all pretty, you know, the paper's still warm from the printer. The water main cost and the proposed construction for the water main includes replacement of about 380 linear feet of water main and replacement of two valves up near tunnel. And that was something that also Public Works wanted to include in there because when we shut down the water main on Spring Street, we weren't, we, we accidentally shut off water to Conrad and a few other locations as well. So, you know, as we've been going along, we're trying to add in more valves to have better control of our system. And, you know, so then, well, why don't you know what valves do what? Or why don't you know what your system has? There are no as-builts in our offices or in our records of any of these pipes. We do the best we can with the information that we have available. We do, we do due diligence. We CCTVed utilities that we could, and we ground penetrated radar the rest of the utilities because we didn't have as-builts. Those are the two most non-invasive forms of identifying utility size and locations, because, you know, and you, and the next step is potholing. Potholing gets pretty expensive during design. And sometimes, if you, so if we were to move forward with potholing, we had a water main here that had no history of any issues. To pothole, it would have been anywhere from $30,000 to $50,000. And that's just paper. That doesn't get you pipe in the ground. And so there was no nexus for potholing at the time that we were doing design, because we didn't have a history of an issue with that line. So, you know, there's, it becomes a balance, too, when you're doing design versus construction work. And oftentimes, you know, and particularly in this contract, the potholing actually gets placed on the contractor for the purposes of verifying, verifying depth and material and condition as well. And then you can make that decision. So the $50,000 that would have been used for paper for pothole data can actually now be fully utilized for, for replacement of the line, too. So it's a balance that we kind of have to play when we do this, these projects. And, let's see, I can, I can go on and on, but I figure it might be good time for me to stop talking and ask some questions or hear some questions and, and see what I can do to help facilitate that. And that concludes my report. And I'm happy to answer anything you guys want to ask.
Thank you, Rebecca. Questions for Ms. Neves at this point? And I'll open this up for our Measure L Committee members, too. Yes, Councilmember Borelli?
Rebecca, and I don't mean this as a critical question, okay? It's just that I live up in this area, as you well know. And so I have observed for 40 years, all the stuff that's gone on with this. And this does not surprise me at all because of all the, you know, the things that have happened. One thing I was kind of curious about, do you remember, and I'm trying, it was about two years or three years ago that we had that horrendous water leak or explosion or something right there on the corner of 49 is? And I believe you have to call, it was, it was on 49. So I think Caltrans became involved. But it seems like to me at that time that, that there was a valve that couldn't be turned off or anything. And I'm wondering at that time, why maybe some of this wasn't discovered? That, I mean, is it this, or do we have new pipes that were involved in that? And then, all along from, from Coloma Street, right there on the corner, up to Tunnel, you guys, you've just been blessed with having to come out at many, many times and dig certain parts up. So I, I was just wondering, why is this a surprise? Because I thought the whole thing was all crumbled anyway. So just, just curious questions, kind of, because I don't know how all this underground stuff works.
Sure. So, good questions and good observations. As far as what occurred at the corner of 49 in Caltrans Right of Way, I would have to defer to, to Nick Stone for that one. I wasn't directly involved with that. However, it is my understanding that the valves were addressed and they appeared to be working, because the valve that we actually replaced at the intersection that we're at Coloma right now is a new issue. It's not one that we knew about. So it was, at that time, thought to be contained as an issue within the Caltrans Right of Way portion. And then, as far as Coloma to Tunnel, being blessed with digging up certain parts, again, I don't have any, you know, data on that. I, I, you know, I swear, we live and die by our documentation, right?
You just look at the black tops, Rebecca.
Yeah, that too. But I mean, yeah, we did look at, we did look at service logs for over at least the last six years.
Yeah.
So, and we didn't have anything.
Okay.
But, you know, but, and to, and to the city's credit, over the last six years, our documentation collection has, our curve has gone vertical. The amount of effort that staff has put towards logging and watching service calls has been exponentially larger than when I first arrived here, for sure. The amount of effort that we put towards our facility maps, our facility maps over the last six years have improved exponentially as well. Anytime we do a project, we put the as-built information into our facility maps. Anytime that we find, you know, and I'll use Pacific Street as an example, we had some examples of some really good valves that we thought were going to work. And then when they didn't, we were able to take all the valves that did work and mark them on the sheet, and also, you know, cross out the ones that don't. And when we find ones that don't, that Public Works has been really good about filling the valve box actually with sand as an indicator visually to the person out there trying to operate the valves. So it kind of goes back a little bit to, you know, how did we get here? Well, you know, there's a history. So we, we, you know, it goes back to wanting to support, you know, Public Works doing a valve exercising program. They've done amazing at improving their valve exercising. They do get, you know, out there, they do turn the valves, they, they, you know, it's, you know, so when we were working on Spring Street, they did go through and check the valves. And, you know, then that one sprung a leak. So.
You have a monumental task.
Now, Councilmember Borelli? To answer your question about the other side of the intersection right there, where that water was leaking for quite a while, that, that was a lead service that failed there. And the issue, what it was, is that it, where the service went off of the main, it manifolded to the close side of the street, and then it also looped over to the far side of the street. So the easiest way to do that was when they, they bored underneath the street, instead of having to close that whole section of highway right there and dig trench going across it. So that's what was going on with that one. The only other issue that I'm aware of, from that whole section of Spring Street right there, is, if recall, it might have been maybe about two or three years ago, there was a fire hydrant that got hit up by the, by the senior center. And so back when we did that, we had to operate and exercise those valves, and none of them were leaking. They were all functioning fine for that, that thing. But we finally got that hydrant replaced. And then I'm aware of another issue where that main tees off and it goes towards Pleasant Street. And that section of pipe up there is, it's an AC pipe. And I remember on, I believe it was on Thanksgiving, probably about four or five years ago, and this, this tees off of the steel line where it's at now, there, there was an issue with that, but that was related to a bunch of tree roots. They had gone around the pipe and kind of crushed it. So we cut those out. But the, the valves worked to isolate that section of pipe when we took care of that one, too. So.
I just feel sorry for you guys having to do all these patches and stuff. I'm glad it was finally discovered, and we're going to get it all fixed. It's great.
Thank you for your support.
Yes, Councilmember Taylor.
Thanks, Rebecca, for this report. It's a tough situation. You mentioned that there's a possibility of needing to replace 800 linear feet. It's like to get to Tunnel Street intersection at the main there. Is that a project that was already on the radar of the H and L Committee in terms of a future project that we would just be bumping up on the priority list? Or is this something that's completely off the radar, that's going to, you know, kind of jump ahead of projects that we were accomplish?
It was not on the radar, as far as, you know, the initial 380 feet and then the additional amount up to Tunnel, kind of supporting what Nick just stated regarding some of the issues. I mean, you know, he just gave a summary of all the items that I was aware of, and even quite frankly, a few I wasn't. So, so I mean, as far as it being on the radar and cutting in front of other projects, no. We didn't know it was there. But that's one of the reasons why we did look at having that reserve available, because oftentimes, you know, I've, I've made the, you know, passing comment that, oh, when there's utilities involved, we got to like double the contingency. Well, even doubling the contingency in this case wouldn't have mattered. You know, we just have such aged infrastructure, you know, and our little sweet old town, so.
And then another question, the $120 or $130 per linear foot?
Yes.
You mentioned that that's at a discount. It's normally around $350. Is it discounted because the road's already torn up? And then that 800 linear foot section where the road's not torn up would be at the $350 price tag, or?
No, and I'm glad you brought that up. I apologize. Again, I was writing it, so it probably came across pretty confusing. So $350 per linear foot is how much it would cost to design and place a line in the street. So hiring, you know, hiring consultant, getting the potholing done, getting survey done, all of these things, you know. So rule of thumb has been, it's about $350 a linear foot to place a pipe. Whereas, in the last 24 hours, we've figured out the alignment, and we've gotten a bid from, or a quote from the product, from the contractor to do the extra work, and it's come in at about $130 per linear foot. So that's where that comes from. I apologize for the confusion on that.
Okay. And then what do you think the odds are of having to replace a 800 linear feet?
Um, you know, I will, I, I'm struggling on that myself, actually, because, so the 380 feet gets us from the intersection of Coloma headed east. And it also includes two valves, the two valves I mentioned, that would be able to shut the water off to Conrad, so they aren't affected by any further shutdowns in the future. When we open up that area to put those two valves in, I don't know what we're going to find. And that's the thing about steel pipe. Sometimes it'll last 50, 60 years, sometimes it'll last 100. The pipe that, you know, was in Main Street lasted 85 years. The pipe that we have, as best guess on age, is about 60 years old. So we could get another 20 to 25 years out of that existing line. The other distinct differences, on the tunnel and the water main is deeper. And what that means is, when you're dealing with a pressurized system, when you have it deeper, you, it has more support around it, versus a part that's, you know, close to the surface and it has no pressure or no support on the top, that's when it'll blow. So, so as far as that goes, I would say we are going to see what we connect up to. It's not uncommon for us to just sometimes have to chase a pipe until we find something good and connect up to it. have to chase a pipe until we find something good and connect up to it.
Okay. Thanks. Sure.
Further questions at this point? Rebecca, I have a.
Can I add to that just quickly?
Yep.
I I was out there last week when, excuse me, seems like last week, it was yesterday, when they were actually replacing the valve and observed. And I'm not, I'm not an engineer, but from my perspective, the pipe, when they cut the section out to put the new valve in, was not in as poor a condition as I expected it to be. Not good, but it it's not perfect condition, but it was not in as bad a condition as I expected it to be. So that gives me somewhat hope that when we get up to this next section, that the pipe, because it is deeper, will be in a good enough condition that we can feel comfortable moving forward with it. But again, as Rebecca mentioned, we won't know until we get in there and replace those valves and then find out what condition it is in. The other question that I think Cara kind of raised was the cost. Right now, we've got this dug up, so the pavement is already moved, so we can easily dig it up to replace the line. That's the way the lesser cost. That next section will eventually be dug up, too. The pavement will be removed because they're removing all of that. Is that correct, Rebecca? So that that lesser lower cost should be realized in that if we have to go back and replace that pipe section also. And that'll continue on through the entire project. They're replacing and redoing the paving, so.
So and if I may also add one more little caveat about the cost, and thanks for bringing that up, Cleve. So when we received the quote, there's a couple of things. So, you know, as I mentioned, water services were originally included in the bid price. The bid price for the water services was sixty-six hundred dollars per service. And the quote that we received from Veer Camp, because it's basically an already exposed condition on the road, they've already got the road shut down, it the price is four thousand per service, so savings of twenty-six hundred dollars per service versus the bid price. So, you know, a couple of things, too. Does the contractor have a right to just extend the quantities at the existing contract unit price? Absolutely. In fact, if it's above twenty-five percent, they're allowed to renegotiate the unit price. So, you know, like I said, we're working with a very good contractor, and they saw the condition from what it was, and they actually did reduce it. So and then the other is the quote for the storm drain came in at a hundred and ninety-three dollars per linear foot, whereas the bid price is two hundred and eleven dollars per linear foot. So there's a small savings there as well. Also, drain inlets, the bid price range from four thousand four hundred dollars up to five thousand three hundred dollars, depending upon the type of DI. And the quote for the storm drain work, it came in at two thousand dollars, twenty-one hundred dollars per DI. So a savings there as well. I know it's a heartburn on the price tag overall itself, but I, you know, I wanted you to understand that we are getting for for what's happened if for how we're moving forward, we're utilizing the public funds well. So.
Rebecca, do you have a sense of how for how deeper the lines are going from basically Tunnel down to Bedford for the rest of the way? I mean, just, I could see the, I mean, the part, the the third leg of that closer to Bedford is obviously in terrible shape where we had the giant sink sinkhole. I just feel like that it's going to be just as bad as what's going on, you know, at this part. But I could be wrong. I just trying to get a sense of, you know, are we really, are we going to have to do the entire length of of Spring Street to Councilmember Taylor's question as well?
So at this time, there's no indication of that. I share in Cleve's hope that that's not the case. You know, we haven't had any issues on that end as well. So, you know, and it's it's considerably deeper up towards Tunnel than it is down at at Coloma. Coloma, I believe it was about eighteen to twenty-four inches cover from the finished surface. So when we picked up the subgrade, it basically had less than a foot of cover. And then heading down towards towards Bedford in the actual intersection of Bedford, we are proposing doing a type-two slurry like what we did on Lower Main. We're not excavating it. Number one, it's in Caltrans right of way. Number two, that area is actually in pretty decent shape from Highway Fifty Ops project. They did have some water main issues on the Highway Fifty Ops project. I have gone through those as built, and they were addressed then. Some of them weren't. One in particular that came to mind is the water main that went underneath the freeway off of Center Street, right behind City Hall. And then, but to answer your question, do we anticipate any issues further on down the line? I will say, no, not at this time. I share in Cleve's hope that 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 this is an isolated instance.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Kuna and then Vice Mayor Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had to unmute myself. I appreciate all the information that Rebecca was able to provide to us today, including the photographs. The photographs, as they always say, save a thousand words. And I was out there Friday, and it was pretty obvious that the situation had gone south with the failed water main and water going everywhere. So thanks to Nick and the Veer Camp crew for dealing with that. And I suppose also Rebecca, we're out there making sure that people had continuity of service. And I imagine they never, you know, the streets closed, thank goodness. I have a couple of, I have several questions, and I'll try and start from the east end and work, no, excuse me, the west end and work up the hill. With the failed valve that we need to replace now there at Coloma Street, are we going to need to get into a Caltrans permitting process?
They actually already have a Caltrans encouragement permit. And yeah, so when we started to look at staging the project, one of the requirements for doing a proper staging control or stage control plan and setting up CMS boards was to obtain an encouragement permit from Caltrans. And we did that. We've actually, before the start of work, we met with the Caltrans encouragement permit engineer. That's also one of the reasons why we're able to have the CMS boards out on Highway Fifty that I'm sure you've noticed as well. So, yes, we have.
Because I know that was a headache for Nick's predecessor, working with Caltrans and getting being allowed to get out there on their state Highway forty-nine. I know that slowed that whole service repair job that Nick was referring to. So that's good. Great. Rebecca, do you have any estimate of when this water main may have been installed, as far as any date?
I do. And I kind of had to do a little bit of sleuthing on my own. When, you know, when I got out there on Friday, I saw exactly as you described, and it was just a feeling of the site itself that I, you know, and it sat uneasy with me all Friday night and well into Saturday. And at that time, I started looking actually on Zillow and started looking at when houses were built. And so from there, I started going and kind of doing some of the math backwards. As far as the segment that we're replacing, it looks like a bulk of the houses were built from anywhere from nineteen, there was one that was built like nineteen eleven, and then another one all the way up to nineteen sixty. So somewhere within that range. Now, did we have a water distribution system there in that area in nineteen eleven? Possibly. But we don't have any as-built records for it. As you head more towards Tunnel, that's a newer segment of construction, and that ranges from about nineteen fifty to about nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety in some of the work areas. And as I mentioned before, we do have, we did have a steel line that went through the cistern on Main Street that we had as built from nineteen thirty-one. And it was actually in decent condition. It just, it wasn't, you couldn't shut it off. We had to put a valve in it. And then once we saw that it went through the cistern, that was, we said, well, not only can we not shut it off, we can't even access it. So then, at that point, we abandoned that line. But it was actually functioning and functioning well. So it's kind of hit or miss with some of these lines.
Okay. Is the line that we're currently working on, is it system a loop? So the same water main system comes up over the hill and down onto the Bedford side? Or are they independent systems?
Partially, actually. So I'm, I might need to share my screen because I actually went through the facilities maps. One second, sorry. So to answer your question, yes, there is a partial loop. So so the loop goes from all the way up to Spring to loops up with, and I'm actually looking more towards the north end, but Maria Vista, Pino Vista, Green Street. And then it also loops up and around and connects up on the backside of Cottage and Conrad, and then comes back up Garden Street, too, and then continues on eastward. We also have, let me pull up a more sheet, and I apologize.
So there's quite a bit of pressure on this line. Or there can be, depending on demand and.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And where it's at in sharing its load with the system. Okay, thank you for that. This one should be quick. Quick answer is, have you, have we been finding the goosenecks that you suspected in the service work?
Some of them, yeah.
Okay, so they're there.
Yeah. So without digging out the line, you, the way that we would look at it is indicated by the type of curb stop that's at the service box. So on Pacific Street, for example, we had seven services that were potentially gooseneck. And then once we actually dug them up and replaced them, I think in reality, it was only about four that were actually lead goosenecks. So we've been finding a similar pattern with this as well.
Okay, great. And this is kind of a off-the-hit question. Is, has a contractor been able to keep busy since this waterworks broke out on Friday and Monday? Have, or have we significantly had a delay because of a bad pipe?
Oh, yeah. No, we've kept them busy.
Okay, good. Good. Thank you very much. And just a comment for to back up kind of what Councilmember Borelli mentioned. And I think that concrete slab has been something that I was aware of, that whole end of Spring and and Coloma was like, don't ever, don't even breathe on any of that, because it was extremely fragile. That was a weird concrete slab was in there. And but this is going back through several public works directors and city engineers many, many years ago. So I think we've all, we're seeing it. Right now, this project is kind of a victim of turnover in, you know, key staff department heads. That's just occurs. And as you mentioned, you know, we're doing a much better job now of documenting this stuff, whereas before, I think it was all written on the back of a notepad, you know, stuffed in some of these old rolodex. So, thank you for having the information available.
Sure. Hey, Vice Mayor Thomas.
Thank you. It is, it's really, this is more of a commentary than it is a question. It's concerning as we move forward with this limited amount of resources we have to do this work around the city, that we keep finding these issues. And and in particular, this one is particularly troublesome because of the amount of money that it that it is adding to the or subtracting from the the available funds that we anticipate having over the 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 full twenty-year, twenty years of both of these measures. And and I think it's important to highlight, you know, these as we move forward, too, that, you know, this, this, you know, this amount of two hundred thousand dollars is going to cut back on the next project as we move forward. And it's going to delay. And so, you know, having it's just the reality of what we're dealing with in the in the city and having this information publicized in a way that that helps people understand, you know, one, the necessity that that what we did a few years ago in Major H and Major Major L is is absolutely critical to supporting the infrastructure of our city, but also that it, you know, it even highlights more the necessity that we take care of it, that we spend the money, and that there may be needs in the future, too, that because it's, it's literally our cities and the residents of the city, it's our water system, it's our sewer system, it's our drain system, and all these things we own, we got to take care of. So and 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 I and I know that the that our committee takes this to heart, and they they manage it the best they can, keeping in mind all the all the needs of our community. And so I wanted to point that out. And I know that the messaging is important, and that as we move forward, that we continue to do that. Did we, so did we know that this pot, how shallow this pipe was underneath that concrete at the, or did we pothole through the concrete? Or was that a new experience for us pulling that those slabs up and seeing where it was underneath there?
Good questions. So, one, we did not know it was as shallow as it was. Two, we did not do potholing and design, and that goes back to, we didn't have any information that there was an issue with it. And three, as far as potholing new and design, no, it's, you know, not new. We do pothole when there's indications of an issue. And I will use Broadway as an example. We happen to have a contractor mobilize for Sierra Tank, and we solicited bids from him, because he was already in town, to pothole on Mosquito Road and Broadway for those two projects, because we did know that there is an issue, because we did have indication and service record issues and things like that.
Got you.
And so we're a little bit better poised for those projects. And like I said, it's it's a balance, you know? I mean, do you spend the fifty grand looking for a problem? And sometimes you'll find a problem, and sometimes you won't. Or do you look at the information you have available, make the best decision you can off of that information that's available, and proceed? In this instance, you know, could we have planned for it better if we would have potholed? Yes. But at the same time, I mean, like, you know, we didn't even know that there was an issue. So rather than spending fifty thousand dollars on potholing and design, I'd much rather put more pipe in the ground.
Yeah. I appreciate that perspective. And, you know, us being, you know, sitting here on the sidelines and not even being in the seats of the of our major H and L committee, we're coming at this. And that's why it was important for me to have feedback from the committee as to their perspective and thoughts on this project and how it fits into the scope. And if there was a question where we had to make a decision, do we go ahead and go that extra mile or extra feet or whatever that number is, it does it fit in with with how, you know, do we want to go another twenty years and hope it lasts? Or should we, should we bite the bullet, do it now? And that that whole thing was kind of, I didn't like making that decision or thinking about making that decision in the blind. So I do appreciate those that have stepped forward and come to this meeting and participate. And I, you know, frankly, I'd like to hear from them as well.
Okay, do you want to hear from me first?
Sure, go ahead, Sue.
Well, we've looked at this, having to reallocate funds from one project to another project, kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul for several years now, and decided that probably the best thing to do would be our, the recommendation we made to create this construction reserve for Major H and one for Major L at our last meeting on August thirty-first. And it's specifically to address these kinds of problems. Because by having a reserve for each measure to address the problems that are discovered in the implementation, those reserve funds can be allocated by the city council to address the change orders to keep these projects moving forward without needing to re-prioritize projects and reallocate funding. The problems in Spring Street have been the bane of many projects in the city. Our water lines are old, especially on old streets, and no amount of testing or potholding will ever find them all. My opinion, anyway, storm drain problems are also not always known before you open up the street. And it's a much wiser use to fix the funds of the problems as they are discovered, so that the work completed meets the goals of Major H and Major L, to fix our streets from the bottom up. That was what we, what we actually put in this measure was, we would fix the infrastructure under the streets as well as the pavement. The pavement lasts a lot longer if the pipes underneath are good. So the change orders here, we, or at least I think, are very appropriate for the recommended construction reserve funds for Major L, and I would encourage your support. And that's my comments.
Thank you, Sue. Mickey or Gary, do you have any comments? Oh, Mickey, you're on mute still.
I'm muted.
Yep, you're good.
Okay. A couple of things. I have a couple, I have a question for Rebecca first. Rebecca, Rebecca, uh, for this water line replacement, storm, storm drain line replacement, is there a necessity for a sewer line replacement? Or is there anything else under there that we need to look at? Or is everything going to be cleaned up with this?
So, great question. We looked at that too, right? On, in the effort to be more thorough, we looked at that today. So, um, and I kind of want to go back to some of the effort that was done during the design phase, you know. Gravity fed systems like storm drain and sewer are a little easier to inspect than a water main. Water mains are kind of this ghost utility. So the ways that we inspect sewer and storm drain, we actually have two methods of locating and inspections. One is through survey during, um, you know, dips at the manholes and finding your inverts to find, you know, segment to segment. Because there are junction structures more readily available and visible. The other is through CCTV, closed caption television or televideo. We have, uh, that, um, ability through public works and public works and engineering worked together. And we did do a CCTV inspection of the storm drain lines. We found, uh, like I mentioned earlier, we found that the only issue was that there were some in the segment that we're replacing, that there was only some minor joint displacement. And, um, but other, overall, the pipe actually appeared to be in pretty decent condition. Um, but we didn't, we weren't so lucky on every part of, uh, the storm drain system within, um, Spring Street. Because we are replacing a pretty hefty amount of storm drain on Spring Street. Let me pull up the linear foot amount. It is about four hundred feet of, um, storm drain pipe. That we're putting in on Spring Street and we're also replacing and, um, some, uh, storm, storm drain manholes. And correcting some system issues that we saw. And that's actually more towards, uh, Tunnel Street, which is the second phase of construction staging. Now regarding the sewer question, we actually did do a CCTV of the sewer main as well. And we reviewed those notes, um, provided, uh, CCTV was provided by Public Works, engineering reviewed the CCTV. Outlined everything, gave it to Public Works and Public Works felt comfortable with that, that time to proceed. We don't have, again, we don't have any indication that we have a sewer issue, not that I'm aware of and not that Public Works is aware of. But we did our due diligence and we did inspect the line. Um, a lot of the feedback that came back from that inspection was, and I want to get the terminology a hundred percent correct here. It was for a fair amount of it, it was, uh, pipe in good serviceable condition. There were some segments where it said, hey, you know, we probably need to flush this and re-inspect. And there were some areas of high flow. Now, I will say that it was CCTV'd in April of twenty eighteen. And we referred to, that was the same year where you had Mayuary, where May was a heavy rainfall year. A heavy rainfall month and April was also that way. So, uh, the high flows could have been attributed to, um, storm drain or, um, roof drain leads being connected into people sewer services. And things like that. And the groundwater table isn't, uh, high in the area that we CCTV'd the sewer. So I feel fairly confident that it's not I and I. Um, but at the time it was a rainy season. So, but we did review our, um, inspection. Logs on CCTV and right now we don't have any indication that there's an issue.
Thank you. Uh, my other comment is, I mean, that's what, uh, what's, I'm reiterating what Sue Rodman said. We set up this reserve fund to cover these kind of issues. And based on criteria that have been set up, if it's an emergency, we need to go take care of it. So the funds can be allocated to the correct project. And I, I think what's really important is that the city residents understand this and that's why we put out this annuals. Uh, survey, not survey, but annual list of all the projects that have been completed using Measure H and L funds. So, because you don't see it, it's, unless you live on that street, you don't know what happened. And you might see some more, a public works project going on, but it's really important that we put that, that list down every year. And show what we've done and all the other grant money we receive for the city because we have these funds. And, and my personal opinion is, I think at the end of the twenty years, we're going to have to go back to the citizens. And request another twenty years of funding because there'll be more projects coming up. And as long as we can show to everybody that these sales tax dollars were used appropriately, which we have been with this oversight committee. And Rebecca's help and guidance through all these projects, I think we'll be able to pass that measure again on another ballot issue. So it's not, it's not, you know, it's easy to say, why are we going here and there? But when, when we're meeting at Measure H and L, we're looking at all the different issues that are coming up. And based on recommendations from Rebecca, we, we, we ninety-nine and ninety-nine, one hundred percent agree with what's coming on. Because she's living it day to day and we're reviewing this information. And we're trying to spend the funds appropriately and looking for cost savings. So, uh, kudos to Rebecca for all the work she's doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mickey. Gary, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
Yeah, I'm just, it's again, it's going to be some re- reiteration of what Rebecca and Mickey said, but I think it's important to, to say it. One is, first thanks again to Rebecca for another really detailed, uh, presentation. She always really helps us understand that the folks on the committee, what's needed to be done and why their priorities. But, you know, I remember it wasn't that long ago, we were talking about this, you know, building the reserve fund up and for cases exactly like this. And we deliberated quite a bit on it. Yeah, had some concerns about it and, you know, here we are exactly. This is exactly what she was talking to us about. And I don't know what, you know, what we would be doing if we didn't have the reserves. And just want to point out, it's, it's really important that we, you know, if we're using up this reserve money and reallocating funds. That we need to keep track on it and make sure we build it back up as soon as we can to make sure it's, because we. I, I think we all know it's going to happen again at some point in the future, some other project, something unexpected is going to come up. So, and, and thanks for letting me speak.
Great, thank you, Gary. Uh, any other questions or comments at this point from council? Uh, yes, Councilmember Taylor.
Just a quick comment. Um. We all work really hard to, um, you know, work within the confines of our limited budget. So when something like this comes up, it just kind of hurts to have to spend two hundred thousand dollars unexpectedly. But, um, this really shows and demonstrates the prudence of the H and L committee. And Rebecca to set up or reestablish the operating reserve and set up the construction reserve. So, um, it would have been nice not to see the need for these so soon after, uh, reestablishing them. But I'm glad that we have them for instances like this, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. So we'll go ahead and open it up. Uh, yes, Vice Mayor Thomas.
Just one more thing. I wanted to thank, um, the Major HL Committee for their work and effort on this. Uh, on, on what they're doing on a regular basis because it's, it's, it's critical. It's nice to have the oversight. Not that Rebecca needs it, but having the community involved in, um. In assessing the need and, and to, and being able to communicate the, uh, the depth and breadth. Effort that we are putting in to, uh, use the money wisely. And, you know, we may not ever, always have a Rebecca or, or other people. So, you know, it's, it's, it's critical that, uh, that we have the, um, the full faith of the community behind this. And it's, and like, uh, Mickey said, when we go forward, we're going to need to have that to, uh, continue this effort. Because I have no doubt that, you know, this, this, you know, this two hundred thousand dollars is for one short stretch of this street. And it just blows my mind to think of what's good, what's down the road that's going to cost the city that, that we're not, that we don't know of yet. That's still, still to uncover as we go around. So, uh, thanks again to the Major HL Committee for, one, for being here today. And for the ongoing effort that you have on, uh, for the city.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Very well said. Uh, we'll go ahead and open up for, uh, public comments at this time.
Oh, the comment is now open for item five point one. Um, go ahead and press the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen, unless you're joining my phone. And you will have three minutes to speak and I'll remind you when you have thirty seconds remaining.
Mayor and Council, if I could, I think I'll mention that we only have one attendee other than you on there and that's our, our consultant here, Jim Fisher. So, uh, if, if you have any questions for Jim, I wanted to let you know that he is there also. He may want, not have wanted me to say that, but he is listening to it, so.
I thank, thank you, Cleve. Okay, well, with that then, I think it's safe to say, we'll, we'll bring it, uh, we'll bring it back, close public comments, bring it back to the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A couple of questions, I think, um. To Rebecca and, um. Concern is, you know, what are we going to find? As Vice Mayor Thomas just pointed out, across the street, uh, across the city. But what are we going to find when we get over on the Bedford side of the hill? And we'll just, and we'll deal with that as we make our way east. But. I've been sitting here, listening to all the very valid comments from the Measure HL Committee. And I too want to join in and thanking them for their dedication and they review a lot of very important projects. And, um, a lot of them, as they, I think all mentioned, they aren't visible to the public. But when you have a geyser of water destroying the street, that's highly visible and also highly undesirable. So, um, it's, it's a tough job and certainly appreciate all of your folks' participation. It's worked out to be a excellent committee. Rebecca, I'm trying to imagine if we were not to replace this line, based on that, what you're saying. I'm going to think nineteen fifty would perhaps be the year that this blind may have gotten installed. You gave a whole variety of range of dates as early as nineteen eleven, but even at nineteen fifty, it's seventy year old pipe. And I've been sitting here thinking, what would it look like, um, if three years from now that we didn't replace the rest of it? And it was to blow out and drain down and, you know, we, the city council and, and yourself. And all the department heads have been involved in various, the costs of third party claims and property damage claims. From flooding and sewer backups and those types of things. You know, talk about, um, the cost of money just going vaporizing if we were to have a major blowout in this line. Would it be possible by either the next council meeting or in the very near future? To ascertain the condition of that pipe up towards, you know, the, the remaining balance. We've got three hundred and eighty feet, so the other four hundred and twenty feet. To use the common term, does it make sense to pothole it up there at Tunnel and Spring Street now? To see if we can get ahead of the information curve? I'm very concerned about leaving seventy year old pipe in the ground under a twenty year old, under a brand new road. And I'm also very concerned about what we're going to find as we open up the, what I call the east end of this project. Do you have any feel for, um, when we might be able to get a little bit more data on the condition of the balance of the pipe?
So we're actively collecting data right now. And you're, you're having, uh, your, your questions are coming up as a, a couple of conversations that have been going on, not only with the project team. But actually even this afternoon with City Manager Morris too. Uh, my comment was, what happens when it fails in twenty years? Because I'm still going to be here. So, you know, I mean, like, I, I don't want to come back. Not that I don't love everybody, but still, um, it was a situation where I had played that forward in my mind as well. You know, uh, we are, like I said, we don't know what the pu- the pipe looks like down on the tunnel end. And one of the strategies actually was to start on that end first with the two valves. Get our eyes on the pipe and then we would know. Um, and then work our way, you know, backwards as we needed to, but, you know, knowing that we have three hundred and eighty feet, you know, you could basically be. Working on the main kind of this way, you know, starting from the outside. Center. Mm-hmm. Um, and then as far as, um. You know, what are we going to find working east towards the Bedford side? Uh, just because, and I, I want to go back to, uh, the storm drain issue that we had, I believe it was December of twenty eighteen. Where we did replace, it was over by the old AT&T or the AT&T building. Yeah.
We flooded it.
Yeah. Merry Christmas.
We didn't mean to, but it's.
Right. So, um, we did, because when that happened, we dove in and evaluated the utilities on the east side. Because that to us was actually more of a concerning area than the west side. And, uh, you know, we are, uh, design team and public works and engineering all contributed. And we even did, you know, we did a utility scoping memo as a form of come to Jesus about our utility conditions. Um, and so we've included, we have included work on that east end, just to clarify that. Um, and that work, uh, is scheduled to begin when that stage goes out. And so we are, I mean, we, with this was, I will say, this was the segment, uh, that had almost the least amount of utilities. Anticipated. So, yeah, so I mean, as we move east, we actually do have utility replacements, uh, in place. And then, um, I wanted to piggyback a little bit, um, with, you know, um, my gratitude and the compliments to the Measure HL Committee. You know, one thing I love about going to Measure HL Committees is they keep me on my toes. Every single one of them has excellent questions. They're very thoughtful. And when I go in there, I, I have to be prepared. It's not something that I can come into fifteen minutes beforehand and here we go. When I go, I, I get asked very thoughtful and very methodical questions. This is a citizen, you know, uh, based committee that really does serve the public as well. They do a great job of asking those critical questions of talking about, is it cheaper to do this or is it cheaper to do that? Do we need to think ahead? Do we need to, you know, and, uh, reassess how we do these projects? And from the painstaking effort that has to, to quote Sue, um, robbing Paul to pay Peter. Um, scenarios were kept coming up. And so it, you know, it just kind of really supported how needed Measure L was. You know, there was on the first project prior to Measure L, but we had Measure H. And one of the first main water main projects besides Main Street that we did was the party water main project. And one of the comments, uh, we'd found a storm drain system that had no bottom. And it was an issue and it came to council as a change order. And when it was discovered at about two in the morning, because it was night work. Um, the question that we got from the contractor, I'm standing out there in the field with them was, well, do you want us to do what we've had to do in the past and just bury it? And I'm like, no. So, I mean, that's one thing about Measure H and L is, you know, over time, I mean, we didn't have money. We didn't, we tried, you know, you, we didn't have the money to maintain our infrastructure. So grateful for Measure H and L, so grateful that we have this money. We, um, we can maintain our infrastructure. We can fix it right when we see it, when we find it, when we know about it. And so, um, that was something I wanted to kind of, um, daylight a little bit too, is just, and, and also to support that. Yeah, I mean, twenty years might not be enough, but we are going to do the very best we can every day. And we show up with the very best to try to serve and get, um, the voters and the residents and the patrons of Placerville infrastructure that's reliable. So, that's it.
Thank you, Rebecca. Rebecca, do we have a sense, I know, I think you said it's a, it's a newer, um, infrastructure when you get to Tunnel, at least a little bit newer. We have any sense of the age of those? Because again, I mean, this kind of goes back to, I think, what everyone said a little bit is. You know, we, if we go ahead and so we replace this portion of it, but then as we go forward, we're putting a brand new road over potentially. Sixty, seventy year old pipe, the rest of the way down to, to Bedford. And as Councilmember Acuna said, you know, we have a, an issue two, three years down the line. You know, where we could have fixed it while we had everything dug up. I mean, I think that's a question that maybe we all have to think about a little bit here as well, as we go forward, but.
Well, you know, and, and one thing, um, you know, just I, I have worked for, uh, in my prior life, prior to City Placerville. If you can imagine that, I worked for several other agencies, um, as design consultant and did some RE work. And, and in old cities too, I did work in downtown Sacramento, right on T Street and, uh, on R and S, right there in the old railroad corridor. And, you know, where they have the combined sewer and storm drain system that's brick, right? So, um, as far as, um, you know, are we going to find something in age wise? Um, you know, at that location we have, I, I'll, I'll refer to the county offices that are there, so roughly that age, right? So about sixties. Um, you know, there was obviously some infrastructure that had to be put in place to support that facility. Um, but in working with the other agencies, something that, um, I can't help but notice is. Um, and I'll, uh, refer to City of Citrus Heights in this particular instance, is that the city manager for the City of Citrus Heights. Has a signatory authority of about fifty thousand to, um, address these things as they come up. And the irony of that is, uh, Citrus Heights has, um, storm drain and roads only. Their water and their sewer are actually through the county. And then it's actually pretty common to have, you know, and these are much larger agencies too. But I will say that they don't have the infrastructure funds in place either that we do. So we're, we're blessed like that. And then, you know, so do we, there's a couple of ways that we can look at it. Do we declare an emergency and have it, you know, addressed if something comes up? Or if we do open up that line and tunnel and decide that, hey, you know, we need to look at replacing more? Do we, you know, there's, you know, and I, and I say we, but, you know, collectively, I'm just putting these ideas in the middle of the table for consideration and thought. And not that a decision has to be made on that necessarily today, but just some food for thought that some, the other ways that other agencies are addressing it.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Mayor, if I could, one thing I might suggest to Rebecca. Rebecca, we have quotes for going up to what we're proposing tonight, plus the water line quote going all the way up to Tunnel.
We do. Yes, sir. Yeah, we have.
Can you please review with the council what those are? One thought that I might present to the council, and the committee can weigh in on this too, is if you're so inclined, you may consider authorizing the amount for that second portion also. But we would only do that if, in my determination, working with the engineers, that it is necessary that that section is also compromised, rather than waiting. I, I looked at how we could do this. Unfortunately, we probably will not know for about 10 days, have a real good answer on that once we finish putting the current line in. So it's, it's going to put us right in between two meetings again and the potential for having to come back again. I'm hoping we're not there and we don't have to replace that portion. But it is something for the council to consider on how you may want to proceed with this. And we can call another special meeting. This was not overly burdensome, I don't think, to do this, but it does take some time. So I'll leave that to you.
Yep. Councilmember Borelli.
You know, I, I, my thoughts are the same as Cleve's. I was going to suggest that. I think it's a good idea, considering all the ifs and the unknowns, you know, and where we're at. I really think it's a good idea.
Kind of where I was hitting with my, I was trying to ask Rebecca that question, but I didn't quite get to get it out correctly. I think what we're looking at as the minimum, Cleve, would be, and Rebecca, would be the 380 and the installation of these valves up at Spring and Tunnel, correct?
Yes, so the, the.
And that would get our, our eyes, like Nick and all of the experts and the experts at Veer Camp, who deal with these old pipes all the time, they can tell. You know, you can, most of the time, you can tell if you've got a viable pipe. And the reality is going to be what they dig up, so. Because I agree with Cleve, we need to give you the flexibility to be able to continue to have that contractor march right up to the maximum, 800 feet.
Yes, I wholeheartedly agree. In a perfect world, it would be great to do that. We did receive a quote from them last night. The amount that's before you within the 135,000 is 108,980. And that is for the 380 linear feet of pipe. It's for installing nine services and six, or excuse me, two gate valves, two water tie-ins at each end, and waterline abandonment of the existing main that's failed, and a two-inch inline blow-off that will function as an extension for a future new main as well too. Because we do try to plan for the future in case we need to tie up to something, right? And then also the efforts to flush pressure tests and disinfect. And that is, again, that's $108,980. The remaining 420 linear feet, because it doesn't have the amount of gate valves and services and a few other items that has fewer quantities on, that will get us from, that will get us the remaining 420 feet. And six services, one more gate valve, one tie-in, because they would just do it all at the same time. So it removes that secondary tie-in, so you don't have three tie-ins, you have to separate the two. And then again, the inline blow-off and the valve replacement on the east end, that is 97,820 for a grand total of $206,800. That's for, to replace all 800 linear feet of water line.
And Rebecca, so that's basically from Spring and Coloma to Pleasant or all the way over to?
From Coloma to Tunnel.
From Coloma to Tunnel, okay.
And then the storm drain quote that we received was right just under 50,000. And we had, I had to, I didn't get this until noon, so I had to do a back-of-the-napkin estimate a little bit when I came up with the 70,000. But we did have some contingency in there. So that was 49,865 as it currently stands. However, I, full disclaimer, disclosure, their, their quantities don't match up with our quantities. And the irony is that we actually think we need to probably do about 80 more feet of pipe, which would take it from 49,000 to about 63,000. And that'll get us to another DI that was found to be in better condition. So as far as the amounts, we've requested 70,000 for the storm drain as a not-to-exceed amount for force account, right? So force account is what's the actual TNM that's being placed in the ground for a quote that we've received of 50,000, but a true possible estimate of around 63. And then for the water main, we've requested 135,000. However, if we want to go forward and have that ability to place the remaining amount to get us to the 800 feet, it's the 206,800. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And then to the 135.
Correct. Yeah, so we would increase that. And again, I apologize, I kind of had to back-of-the-napkin estimate a lot of these things. The 135 came about before we looked at the need to do the remaining 420. So we were in alignment there, but then when we got out in the field and we had started moving on the staff report and everything else, just the timing of it, we didn't have that ability to include that secondary number. It was kind of, we did the best we could.
Gotcha. So Rebecca, just as a, you know, worst-case scenario type thing, this is one-third really of, of the project. If we had to do the additional two-thirds, then we'd be looking at another, you know, half-million dollars back-of-the-napkin type of, of amount to get from Tunnel to Bedford.
And a good comparison or, you know, kind of gauge for it too, is Main Street is 1,405 feet long. For 1,450 feet, 1,450 feet, 1,450 feet long from, from Sacramento to Bedford. That project where we replaced storm drain, we lined the sewer and we replaced the water main and services incomplete. It was, and repaved the road, was 2.2 million. We have done a much more thorough and thoughtful and methodical approach to assessing this because as we do these projects, we do, you know, we do a better job. We learn, we, we refine and as best as we can. So this project actually includes a fair amount of what otherwise, you know, could be considered a replacement on that project. So that's kind of a comparison. So this, this project was awarded at about 700,000. And, and now we're looking at adding about 300,000. And that would bring us to a million. And then Main Street, which was a complete overhaul, was about 2.2. So it's all, it all seems, it's, it's a lot of money and it's not to be taken lightly, but.
So Rebecca, are you saying that it's about 10 days before you'll find out if we need to do that other section?
Well, I mean, in all honesty, if we decide to proceed with the 420 feet, I think Veer Camp will direct their guys to look at it tomorrow. So they, they, you know, they secured, what they did, what they've been doing, you know, in this stand-down period is they've been securing the materials. They, yesterday afternoon, they were calling the, the material suppliers, securing the RCP pipe and securing the water, sticks a water main pipe in case council approved it. So, I mean, they, they're ready to go, they're chomping at the bit. So it could be sooner for sure.
I, I think another answer that Kara is, originally, we were going to wait and see. But if you give us the authority to do that second part, we will do that right at the beginning, do that evaluation of that line so that we know for sure what they're going to do, how much they're going to do all the way up. So normally, I, what, the way I was saying, maybe 10 days in their process of just doing that first section first, it would have taken a little bit longer. But if we have that authority and know we're thinking we might have to do it, we'll probably go and evaluate that earlier, Rebecca, is what I'm thinking, so that we know they have their scope of what they will be doing as they start the, this first part of laying pipe, so.
Cleve articulated it better.
So we're, we're looking at approving the 205,000 in the staff report and then adding another 200,000 to it as contingency for the 800 feet possible to Tunnel Street.
No, it would be about 100,000.
Okay.
Yeah, so it would be the 205. And that, and even the 205 has about a $25,000 contingency in it, maybe even more.
So what I, what I see is we have 206,600 for both segments of the water line. And then we have a quote for 49,000, but Rebecca, you're thinking it's closer to 60?
I do.
With a storm drain, which would bring us to $266,000 approximately for, for the entire project. Rebecca, so I'm going to look back at you, is that a number you would be comfortable with? If we had to go all the way to Tunnel with the water line and then doing what we proposed for the storm, storm line? Is that sufficient number that? 26, 270,000, 270,000?
Yeah, 270 would be a good level of comfort.
Want input from Measure H, Measure L? For me, at least, I would say, go ahead and do the rest of it because I would lay odds that as soon as you open up the rest of it, you're going to find you've got the same kind of pipe and it's maybe in slightly better shape, but is it in good enough shape to hold up? I doubt it. I would say, go ahead, go the extra, the extra 400 feet or whatever it is and get her all done. It'll last a lot longer and then you've got some security to know that, yeah, we know it's good.
Thank you, Sue. Any further comments?
Mr. Mayor, what direction are you looking for right now?
Yeah, so I think, I mean, I think there's a couple of, I think we have to tackle this as what's presented to us right now and what we, what we know is before us. I think on an intermediate term, we need to look at, you know, whenever we've had these bigger projects like this, it's, we tend to run into these, you know, we don't know, it's, no matter how good of a job you all do on this, you just don't know what's going to be underneath, you know, in 100-year-old pipes that are laying around or 60, 70-year-old pipes. And so it's hard to ascertain what, what that's going to look like. So I go back to, you know, do we have to build in more contingency? I mean, I, I'm not sure, but I think that's a, that's got to be a discussion that we need to have going forward. You know, we got mosquito around here, around the corner as well. But, you know, I can foresee this Bedford, you know, the rest of Canal. It's not improbable to think that we're going to run into very similar issues. Yes, Councilmember Acuna.
I, I have one question, and I think it's a responsible one to ask. Everybody but Rebecca will probably cringe, but Rebecca, we've looked at this and made sure that we don't need to increase the size of this water line for fire flows or anything of that nature.
Good question. We already looked at it.
Thank you. I wanted to have that as a record, just in case in the future somebody says, oh, you should have done that. Nope, you've already run.
We did. Yeah, when we, we, good question. Yeah, we, when we looked at placing the blow-off for the future connection, should we need to expand it? That was, the next question was, well, do we have what we need for fire flow?
Yeah.
And one of the questions is, you know, we do have some mains in town that aren't quite beefy enough to handle fire flows and fire hydrants. And as we've done projects and replaced them, we have replaced them with larger lines. And this particular instance, we are replacing line with an eight-inch PVC 900, which is our standard.
Great, thank you.
Certainly.
Mr. Mayor, if you're happy, I'd be, or if you're willing, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Yes.
Mr. Warren knows how I love to spend money. Is he in the office of there? Have we sat him down to where he's?
Worst day.
Sitting at the moment, hopefully. I'd go, I'd go ahead, based on the information presented by staff, I'd make a motion to approve the item with the full 820 feet and the estimated 60, at 206,000 and the estimated $60,000 for the storm drain work. Including the valves and all the accessories as, as has been outlined by our city engineer.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Question, Rebecca, what does this do for our timeline going forward here? And then how are we getting the information out to the affected areas? Once the, I know we had talked about maybe there might even be some nighttime construction, but just wondering what that, what this looks like going forward as we let, you know, let folks know about turning, turning water off, things like that.
So I'm wanting to reduce the impacts to our customers. We did look at, could we escalate the schedule and through the methods of night work and through OT, basically? This quote does include OT. So we're, we are turning it over. And speaking with Matt Veer Camp last night while we're repaving Schnell, he said that it looks like it's about a 10-day impact. I will say that my experience is when Matt says 10 days, it's usually less than that. So that I would say hopefully 10 days at the most. Yes, oh, sorry.
Yes, Vice Mayor Thomas. Oh, muted still, Dennis.
I was thinking I heard 270,000 and 65,000 for the, the drain, the wastewater, not wastewater, the, was. Storm. Storm drain. And so a total of 270 and not 265, did I hear that wrong?
So it's, so the, the requested amount, and I'm going to repeat this, hopefully I got this right. So the, the motion that Councilmember Acuna has presented was approving the full amount, which would be the $206,800 in the full water main replacement plus the 65,000 for the storm drain, which puts it right around 270. It's like 271, but I think that there's some items in here that probably, could probably, you know, it's $1,000. It'll end up as a force account, it'll probably get deleted.
I just wanted to make sure I heard 26, 270 or 71 and not 265.
Yeah, and I think, yes, I included the word in there to reference Rebecca's exact figures because I know she had done some, there was some work, additional work with the storm drain and that, you know, all of the different parts for the water.
All right.
We're going to let her numbers drive with the Veer Camp folks.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, just one question. I want to make sure we're saying, so are you requesting that we move forward with, do, not evaluate, but go ahead and do the full 800 feet, is that what I'm hearing?
I would give authorization up to.
So if we determine still. Still determine whether or not that top section is okay? If it's okay, we don't replace it then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That would be the intent of my motion, leaving it up to the experts.
Great, thank you.
I want to see Nick upside down in a hole after they cut into the main up by Tunnel Street, making sure that he's, he's tapping on the main with his hammer to see how many years' life are in that section. And we'll document that, that'll be the document that'll go in the city archives.
Give Patty and I some hard hats, we'll, we'll, we'll meet right there and go down in there.
There you go, and we want, we want to see he's using those new tools.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, yeah, the new tools, that's right.
24 volts of something.
Yeah, hammering on that old steel pipe.
Okay, so we have, all right, so we do have a first and a second. Do we have any other comments or questions before we go to a roll call vote? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
All right, that measure passes. Thank you, everybody. Again, I want to, as everyone's mentioned, I want to thank our Measure H and L Committee for joining us this evening and for also adding their thoughts on this as well as their expertise as we move forward on this to have that oversight at the same time on a, on, you know, 12 hours' notice or whatever we were, we had to do to do this. I want to thank the committee for doing that. Rebecca, I know I've been talking to you since this first went on, when I, I called. Rebecca, I know I've been talking to you since this first went on, when I, I called Cleve and said, hey, I think something happened. My, my water's off. And so I know I've been keeping a close eye on this one, so I really appreciate your work and Nick and everybody else that's put a lot of time into this. Like I said before, I mean, we just, there's uncertainties when we go forward on these and we don't know what's under the ground despite cameras and, you know, xraying it and all, all, all those things that, that happen. It's just, you, you just don't know until you open it up. And that's going to be something that I, you know, that's, that's the message I think we have to continue to get out to our residents as well. I mean, because there probably could be some frustration like, well, why isn't it done? Why is it taking longer? Or why, you know, we know this is going to impact projects down the road because we're spending more money today than we thought we were going to have to. And so to get that out, so even like your pictures, Rebecca, I mean, if we could put those on social media, show what we're dealing with. I mean, I think that's a great thing to highlight so that people understand the full scope of what we're trying to do and what we have to do as we move forward with all of these projects. So again, thank, thank you to everybody.
Right.
All right.
Can I request that, if it's not too much trouble from Veer Camp, grab us a piece of that pipe that blew up last Friday. We'll have the mayor sign it. That, that's a kind of a physical evidence that three foot piece of that old junk would be helpful.
Put it in archives?
Yep, parade around the meetings. It's part of the transparency issue though. It's like, that's all that stuff you don't see and it's ugly.
That's true. We also have like little pieces of like orange berg and other pieces that we can just carry with us. We say like, this is what our pipes are made out of and, you know, we break a little piece off to, to show how brittle they are.
I can make that happen for you.
All right, thanks, Nick.
He's, go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead, Mark.
Now I'm just going to tell Nick to be sure to use his new tools when he gets the pipe sample. And you can use a pressure washer to wash the pipe off.
Are you sure you want to wash those pipes?
Oh heavens, yes.
Some of them, yeah, but some of them, they'd be pretty more illustrative if they are left as is, as they come out of the ground.
True. All right, well, again, thank you, everybody. We will go ahead and adjourn this special meeting of the city council. And I think I'll see some of you down at the bell tower here soon. All right, see you, everybody. Bye.